Join me in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands now, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go directly into citizens' comments. If anybody has a comment that's not -- something that's not on the agenda, we ask you to fill in the card. We'll bring you up here and then we'll take up to three minutes of discussion. And we have to have you give your whether you're a resident of Oregon City or not. Is there somebody that wants to speak something that's not on the agenda? Bring them. We'll go ahead into the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody wants polled?
No.
Okay. We have items in general business.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Did you want to add an item to the agenda regarding the option agreement?
Oh, yes, we will. We'll be adding an item to the agenda that would require a motion. This will go into general business, I presume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. And we'll put that, I guess, as items since we've got everything labeled up through Item C under general business.
Seven E.
D, we'll call it E.
Seven E.
Okay, very good. Before we start A and D, I want to say something. We got a couple of items here that we call emergency items. They require a first and second reading if it's declared an emergency. Usually, we do a first reading on an ordinance and do a second reading at a subsequent meeting. If there's something that's time urgent, we can do a first and second reading. But in order to do the second reading, we have to have unanimous vote on the first reading. I just wanted to let everybody know what the process was there. And with that, we have -- we'll go on with the first reading of Ordinance 11, 10, 12, granting a telecommunications franchise to TV Telecom of Oregon City to occupy the rights of way within the city of Oregon City and declaring an emergency. And I believe our staff person will be Nancy Ide.
That's correct. And I'm going to turn it over to our franchise attorney, Nancy Werner, with Barry Elsner and Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thanks for having me out here again. I'm here to talk again about another telecommunications franchise. It'll sound very similar to the last time was here. A couple of months ago, the Commission granted a franchise to Integra Telecom. Tonight, it is TW Telecom. It used to be known as Time Warner Telecom. It's a very similar -- it's actually the same franchise as you gave to Integra. Very similar circumstances where they are only going to serve one customer in the city initially. As the Mayor mentioned, this is an emergency and that the basis for that is that they are in a big rush to serve this customer. The customer's been asking for service. And so we were getting through this franchise process as quickly as we possibly could. And we don't want, for legal reasons and I assume practical reasons as well, we don't want to be holding up a telecommunications company that's trying to provide service in the city. There's a federal law that prohibits the city from prohibiting telecommunications services. And we don't want to drag this on to the point that you could be in violation of that. We're certainly not there. The city hasn't been dragging their feet at all. But that's the basis for requesting this be declared an emergency. I'll just very quickly again go through the terms of the franchise. It's a 10-year franchise that allows TW Telecom to provide telecommunications services in the city. Again, initially, they'll only be serving one customer in the city. The franchise fee is the same as what was granted to Integra, which is the greater of 5% of their gross revenue or a minimum fee. Presumably, the minimum fee is what would be paid initially because it's very unlikely the one customer would generate revenue that 5% of which would exceed the minimum fee. The minimum fee for the first two years is $3,000, and then it goes up $1,200 a year through year 10, so for a total potential of $13,000 per year as a minimum. It also has a same unique characteristic that Integra had, which is if they -- if TW Telecom installs any facilities in the right-of-way of the city that do not go to that customer. So if it installs additional facilities that will be serving a customer outside the city, they have to pay $2.75 per foot for every foot that doesn't go to this customer. And if they ever stop serving customers in the city, then the fee will change to the $2.75 per foot. The reason for that is there are several telecommunications companies in the city right now that do not provide service. They just pass through and they all pay $2.75 per foot. There is also a telecommunications company in the city that serves many customers and pays the 5% of gross revenue. So we're trying to find a balance of, you know, the fairness of how do we make this as equal as possible to what the other companies in the city are doing. So that is it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one. The initial franchise fee that we're doing here, if I understood you correctly, is under what we currently have, and we're planning to change that to a per foot. So if the services get extended elsewhere, I think is what you said, it would go onto the new system should we approve this next ordinance?
Yes. The service to this customer, I don't know, let's say it's, you know, 5,000 feet. I have no idea. Let's just say that's what it takes to get to this customer's place. All that will be covered under the minimum annual fee or 5% of gross revenue from whichever is greater. But if they serve -- if they need to travel through the city to serve a customer outside the city and that's 10,000 feet, they will pay the $2.75 per foot on that 10,000 feet.
Okay. No other comments? I have a motion. Your first reading.
Move to recommend staff -- move to approve first reading of Ordinance Number 11-1012, granting telecommunications franchise to TW Telecom of Oregon to occupy the rights right-of-way within the city of Oregon City and declaring an emergency.
Wouldn't it have to read, move to approve first and second reading?
I think we have to do them two separate.
Make the most -- two separate motions.
Right.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I have to read it first.
It was so good for about the last three meetings.
This is Ordinance 11-1012, an ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to TW Telecom of Oregon LLC to occupy the rights of way within the city of Oregon City and declaring an emergency.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nasida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We can go on to the second reading. I'll make sure it gets ready. And the reason we have to have the first reading separate is to know we have unanimous vote. Okay, with that, motion for the second reading.
Move to approve for the second reading and final adoption of Ordinance Number 11-1012.
Second.
This is Ordinance 11-1012, an ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to TW Telecom of Oregon LLC to occupy the rights of way within the city of Oregon City and declaring an emergency.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nasida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe our next item is in fact changing the method of charge to a amount per foot, repealing the old ordinance. Again, we're having the staff to speak to this. This is David Wimmer.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're not talking about feet. We're talking electricity, isn't it?
Electricity.
Oh, this is electricity. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Anyway, I like what you just did there. That was the first and second thing. That's what we need to do right now.
You liked it. I did it right.
This one's worth a lot more money. This is really a fun deal to have such a positive ordinance in front of us here. We got into the 20-year franchise with PGE in 1993. That was a long time ago, but I realized that was just a year before I started. Anyway, in those days, there was only one way they calculated franchises. It was under the gross revenue method, and so all the franchises were that way. Then shortly after that, this thing, there was a thing called direct access, which allowed huge users of electricity to buy electricity basically from anywhere in the country. And that's Blue Heron decided to do that. And when that happens, the gross method, gross revenue method doesn't work anymore because they're not buying electricity from PGE. So the legislature came up with a method called the volumetric method, which sort of compensated. It didn't put you back whole, but it helped, saved you a few hundred thousand dollars every year. And that has helped us along for the last four or five, seven, about seven or eight years, I believe, since 2004. But with Blue Heron leaving, PGE approached us last month and say it's time to go back to gross revenue because their estimates for the franchise for this year will be 869,000 versus 525,000, so we have about $344,000. It's just by switching back to the method of gross revenue. And we're treating this as emergency too because it needs to be done before the end of the year. And at this time of the year, with bad weather and lack of meetings and people out of town, we just wanted to try to get it done quickly. And we have a PGE representative here, Annette Mattson. And no use bringing her out twice for this thing, which is clearly, there is absolutely no downside to not doing it. Just for your information, we get about 700, average $735,000 a year over the last 18 years with a high in 2,200, $2 of a million. And this last year was the low at 620,000. So this will put us back above average. I know. Annette's here. She's willing to answer any questions if anybody has any questions. You've all been around Annette before. She does great service for -- great representative of PGE to all the communities around.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. And your projection, your budget projection for this item was 600,000?
Right.
Okay.
So we're actually, this is going to be 269,000 more than we budgeted. I figured we're still going to be, we're really on a downward slope the last couple of years. So this is a very, very, very nice surprise. It will help us do some of the other things we put in the budget, like the Emma Tinger House and things, too.
Move to approve.
I knew that was happening.
Should have said that first.
Move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 11-1011, repealing Ordinance Number 05-1,000, and electing to use the gross revenue method to calculate franchise fees for Portland General Electric and declaring an emergency.
Second.
This is Ordinance 11-1011, an ordinance repealing Ordinance Number 05-1,000, and electing to use the gross revenue method to calculate franchise fees for Portland General Electric and declaring an emergency.
Roll call.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nasida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
And we can go on to the second reading.
Move to approve second reading, Ordinance Number 11-1011, repealing Ordinance Number 05-1,000, and electing to use gross revenue method to calculate franchise fees for Portland General Electric and declaring an emergency.
I take it that's final adoption as well as second reading?
And final adoption. Thank you.
This is Ordinance 11-1011, an ordinance repealing Ordinance Number 05-1,000, and electing to use the gross revenue method to calculate franchise fees for Portland General Electric and declaring an emergency.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nasida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
There's no cost at all for the customers.
That's good to hear. So we're not going to have to pay for any? Oh, you mean there's no increased cost to customers? Oh, I thought we were getting a real deal there. Okay. See, we're coming to electronic message policy for the City Commission, and Nancy Ide will be our staff person here.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commission. At the April 20th City Commission meeting, you asked that a draft electronic messaging policy be developed for the City Commission. The City Attorney's Office developed this policy, which addresses a variety of concerns that are related to the Commission's communication activities. And the city's aim is to reduce any risk or liability associated with its use. At a previous work session, you made a few suggestions for changes, and the City Attorney responded with a memo. And the memo was included in your packet, and the revised policy is attached. And if you have any further questions about it, Mr. Sullivan can answer them.
Are there any questions?
Do you want me to mention what the changes were that you?
Yeah, I think it might be.
Okay. The changes were to the city's access to public records, which were created by elected officials in city messaging systems, and also the city's response to public records requests for records created by elected officials.
Yes. I had raised at the last meeting, we discussed this, my concern for the paragraph that is at the bottom of page two and at the top of page three. And I still have that concern. The point I had made at the last meeting was that state statute already governs how elected officials respond to public information requests. And I feel that the, it's the prerogative of a city elected official to manage his or her own email account. And I think that I would like to move to delete this paragraph and adopt the policy. And I will just say that anybody who does want city staff dealing with public records requests for them, I think could arrange that even if this were deleted. But I have concerns about the prerogative and privacy of an elected official to manage his or her own email account. So I would prefer that that paragraph be removed and the policy adopted.
Do you have any comments?
I do. It's really your policy, so it's up to you to develop or not. However, the public records that are received by way of email, even to an elected official, are certainly that, they're public records. I don't think Commissioner Nasida disputes that. I think the issue is what happens when a elected official wants to withhold or challenge? And I've got two answers to that. First of all, with regard to your own private email account, you have that prerogative. And I think we did go through that about a year and a half ago. But when the records are the city's, and the city is the custodian of the record, it is the city that must respond to that. And the way we tried to balance this policy was to say, anytime we get a request for a city, an elected official's public record, you get notice of it, and we can decide what to do. However, the city as the custodian is obligated to respond, whether or not you adopt this policy.
I've got to say, that is different from what you advised us the last time.
I certainly don't think it is. And I did look at two things. I use my own recollection because I couldn't find a kerfuffle, for want of a better word, that you, Commissioner Nasida, had with Colin Minor over your private email. And there I said that you had the ability to deal with that on your own.
No, he hadn't written me about my private email. He had written me about.
My recollection was that it was your own email. All right. Regardless of that, the fact is that this is a city custodian of public records, and the city must respond to that. And the only thing, if you had read the memo that I prepared for this, is that you have a claim, that the claim is not dispositive except if it's your email, your own private email. Otherwise, it is the city's responsibility as the custodian to respond to the public record request.
If I might make an additional comment here. Those records exist whether we're on the Commission or when we're off the Commission.
Correct.
And so it seems to me that this is appropriate way of handling the issue, that those public records are always part of the public record stream.
Right.
And the city has that responsibility even after we've left our seats.
Correct.
Well, I would like then to continue this because I would like to check the statute myself.
That'll be a decision of this body. We do have somebody wishing to make comments unless you have something else to add at this point. William Gifford.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, I hope this isn't too small of a nit, but I did notice that in this description that I had read, it's in the last set of bullets here, it says, "The system administrator shall keep a record of these messages." But nowhere in this document could I find a definition of who the system administrator is.
Where are you at, Wayne?
Right below, on page three.
I know. That's.
Oh.
Page three.
Right here.
Yes, page three, yeah.
Okay.
Right there. It just says, "The system administrator shall keep a record of those messages."
Oh, I see.
But I don't know, is that the system administrator of, is that the director of IT? Is that the individual administrator?
Good question.
I just didn't think it was clarified.
City administrator would be.
The city, the system administrator is the city's IT supervisor, who keeps track of, he has access to email accounts and can.
And that is a specific title he or she would have?
As part of the job description, yes.
Okay. So no other comments? It's up to the Commission of whether you want to postpone this. Otherwise, we could take a motion to go ahead and adopt the policy.
I would move to continue this item to the next Commission meeting.
There are second.
I would second that based on what Mr. Gifford just brought up.
Except it's defined what it is.
It's defined in the job description.
It's defined in the job description.
But we're referring to a title here rather than a description, a job description.
It's not capitalized.
It should be capitalized.
No, it shouldn't be.
She's arguing that wouldn't be.
It's not capitalized, and it's not a title. It's just a description of the IT supervisor's job, part of the job description.
So there'll always be somebody that has that job description?
That's right.
So did you, you were going ahead with your second?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded that this be continued?
Commissioner Mum?
No.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nasida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
No.
Okay, passes three to two, and we'll see about the next Commission meeting, I presume. Would that be soon enough?
Yes, yes, that's certainly, we can have that on the next meeting.
Right now.
Could you clarify again how, exactly how you want to?
I thought the motion was to continue to the next Commission meeting.
Yeah. I don't think you have to do anything else to this document at this point. I think what Commissioner Nasida wants to do is to review it more. So I don't think there's anything you have to do with this at this point, other than bring it back. Maybe for some recommended revisions. Okay. We now go on to Item D, Resolution 122, establishing a policy regarding media and executive sessions. Again, Nancy Ide.
And I am going to turn this over to the City Attorney, following just a brief introduction for you. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 11-22, establishing a policy regarding media in executive sessions. Under the ORS, representatives of the news media shall be allowed to attend executive sessions, but the governing body may require that specified information be undisclosed. And this resolution is a description of what defines a media representative, what defines the media, and then what proof the media has to have in order to be accepted into the executive session. And Mr. Sullivan, do you have anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission, this has gone through several versions and has been removed from the agenda a couple of times to accommodate comments by the Oregonian and by one of the radio stations that was concerned over the scope of the resolution. There are two or three points to make on it. First of all, the issue on non-disclosure, which is certainly the city's interest in the integrity of its decision-making process, has been narrowed. If you look at the bottom of page one, the, in order to be within that exception, the description of and the discussion that is exempt from public disclosure has to be within the statutory authorization. So if you wander away, that's fair game for someone to report on. And you can, with that, make the exempt discussion nondisclosable. At the top of page two, there are two automatically recognized media, mainly for those folks who come out here all the time. Item four deals with recognition of new news media and a process for doing that. Again, the issue is who is a representative of the news media? What is the news media? And largely, that has to be decided on a case-by-case basis with the presentation of information and credentials. And there's a provision here for review of any Commission decision. On the bottom of page two.
Can I ask a question at this point?
Sorry, go ahead.
Are we still under four?
I was under four, and the four has the characteristics of what a news organization is.
My understanding is there was a query from Wyman Falls Media Center whether or not they could be considered, and could you just simply answer that yes or no?
No, I can't answer that yes or no. And that's, I would need to get information as to what this individual actually does and whether or not this is a news organization and whether or not he's a representative of the news organization, as opposed to someone who manages it. So we'll need to, as someone said, burn that bridge when we come to it.
Okay.
On the bottom of page two, you have the method for credentials, and you also have the, on the top of page three, again, the ability to exclude someone who has violated your understandings. We do now, as a matter of practice, disclose at the beginning of an executive session that the ORS section number under which the executive session is held, and that participants are required not to disclose that. Moving on, if I can move this down. If you look at the top of page four, you have, again, this requirement that you can't disclose so long as it remains within the scope of the executive session. We have eliminated a provision that prohibited taking notes. I'm not sure that that. I'm not sure that that provision could withstand an attack. There is an ability to enforce these provisions from the news media standpoint through the Oregon Ethics Commission. It was a duty given to them by one or two sessions ago, and we've been trying to look at what other folks have been doing, talk to other city attorneys, and while some of the news media would like even more to be put in there, we think this is defensible.
Do we have any questions? Any comments from the public or the press?
I'll move to approve and adopt Resolution 11-22, Establishing a Policy Regarding Media in Executive Sessions.
Second.
We, go ahead with the roll call then?
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
I think I'll let our city manager introduce the next motion, if you wish.
Actually, Mayor, I don't have the copy of that language, so I think the city recorder or you.
Yeah, well, I can read what the proposed motion is without making the motion.
Sure.
It's to consent to a 60-day extension of the closing date to January 15, 2012, under the option agreement. By doing so, the city commission notes the following, I don't think we mentioned what the option agreement is, so we've got to do that, too. "The city is not a party to Option A agreement and is not obligated to sell the subject property. And B, in order to expedite matters, Historic Properties has stated that the city commission consent will be acceptable even though its option agreement is within the Oregon City's Urban Renewal Agency. This consent was provided as a courtesy to allow discussions among the affected parties in an effort to resolve matters in dispute. The city reserves all its rights and assertions and waives none of its rights or assertions as to issues arising with respect to the option agreement." And this will probably be very confusing to the public here, so we might clarify, if you could clarify what is before us here.
Absolutely. So, the city commission owns a piece of property at 1743 Washington Street. That property was presumably conveyed by an urban renewal agency of the city that does not own the property to a buyer of the property some time ago in a contract. There's been, a dispute has arisen between whether or not the city wants to go ahead with that process and convey the property, and that dispute is attempting to be resolved between the buyer, potential buyer, and the city. So, this 60-day extension is a period in which those parties can work on that to see if they can avoid potential litigation over the property.
Okay. And that's probably understood by some and not understood by others. That's fine. Does somebody want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for what...
I just wanted to get the date in the wrong place. I might as well read it out again. I can't make the motion.
I move to consent 60-day extension of the closing date to January, yeah, January 15, 2012, under the option agreement.
I think the entire text should be read.
Yeah, I do, too.
Okay, why don't I read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to consent to a 60-day, I move the commission to consent to a 60-day extension of the closing date to January 15, 2012, under the option agreement. In so doing, the city commission notes the following. A, the city is not a party to the option agreement and is not obligated to sell the subject property. And B, in order to expedite matters, Historic Properties has stated that the city commission consent will be acceptable even though its option agreement is with the Oregon City Urban Renewal Agency. This consent is provided as a courtesy to allow discussions among the affected parties in an effort to resolve matters in dispute. The city reserves all its rights and assertions and waives none of its rights or assertions as to issues arising with respect to the option agreement.
Second, moved by Commissioner Nocida and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Motion passes. We're going on into the consent agenda, and I heard nobody make a request to call anything. I hear a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Before we go on, the next thing we have on our list are communications. Before we go on, I noticed three people diligently taking notes here.
I think a couple more than that.
A couple more than that.
Six, seven, eight.
And some of them are diligently taking notes, but it's all right, too. Would one of you want to come up and say why you're here? Don't be embarrassed.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can go ahead and sit down, talk into the mic, introduce yourself and why you all are here.
So, we're from a private academy in Portland, and it's called Portland Amist Academy by Mall 205. And for our government class, our teacher asks us to come to a city council or some type of formal, like, hearing or something like that, and like, observe, take notes, write a reaction, write a summary, stuff like that. So, yeah, we're just watching.
Great, well, great. Appreciate your coming. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go on to the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight. Nancy Crushour has two items she wants to talk about this evening. One of them, one of the commissioners had a question of me recently about the Alice Norris Art Project here at City Hall, and she's going to provide us an update on that. And also, she's going to talk to us a little bit about a project called the Willamette Valley Resiliency Regional Workshop. Nancy?
I'll talk about the Alice, the art that is being donated to the city in honor of former mayor Alice Norris. Some of you may know that there was quite a bit of donations made by various, various people in the community to come up with a total budget of, originally it was $4,500, I believe, and it's now actually $5,000 has been contributed. And the goal of these donations was to create a piece of art in honor of the former mayor, and the desire, so what we wanted to do then is, we had to select an art committee to select an artist, and the committee worked with Cheryl Snow and the Clackamas County Arts Alliance in accordance with our adopted city policy on art, and hired the artist, whose name is Nick Thomas, to design the art. I guess you design art, you create art, right?
You don't design?
Or both.
Yeah. And also, too, the art committee was tasked with selecting a location for the art, and they felt it was most important to put it at City Hall where many, many people would be able to view it. So, the art has been, it has been designed, and it's in the process of being created. It's being constructed at Nick Thomas's design studio. And the timing on this is, the art was to be completed in December, and I believe the artist is on schedule. The art selection committee was comprised of seven people representing the arts, representing the community, arts professionals, staff, et cetera. So, if anybody's interested in seeing a presentation about the art, I'd be happy to meet with you here in the chambers. But I didn't know if there was any other questions, or does that give you the information you need? Okay, I guess so, huh? All right. I might add that we've done, we've also done the structural analysis on the art and how it's going to be installed in the entryway, and the structural engineer donated all of his time to do the analysis, which was another, was $1,500 or so to the project. Then the next item that I wanted to update you on, and I mentioned to you about a month and a half ago, about the Willamette Valley Resilience Compact. And there is, there has been going on for about 18 months now, jurisdictions and agencies throughout the Willamette Valley have been meeting on a voluntary basis to try to coordinate how we can be resilient in the Willamette Valley, because there's so many common agricultural, cultural, and natural resources types of things we have in common in the Willamette Valley, and how we can be resilient against natural hazards, impacts from changing climate, public health, and food, water, and energy supply. And the belief is that if there's really an integrated cooperative approach amongst the governments and stakeholders, that we will be able to prepare in a much more effective and efficient way for resiliency for these different crises that we could face. And I've handed out to you a, basically, a lot of information about what this is all about, and it's being organized by a group called TRIG, let me see if I can find, the Resource Innovation Group, and it's comprised of various people from Portland State University and University of Oregon, and it's come from various different academic-type origins. But there's also some sponsorship by NOAA, and they are having a summit, or, yeah, I guess they're not calling it, yeah, they're calling it a summit, and there's this piece of information, invitation to that. There are quite a few people going from different agencies in the Willamette Valley Metro, Portland, Clackamas County, Lane County, and they would really like to get the participation of an elected at this summit, because ultimately, they would really like it if these agencies would sign the Willamette Valley Resilience Compact, which I've also given you, so you could get a sense of what it's all about. We have been, staff has been participating because we think it's a good, it's very important. Oregon City has, tends to play a centralized role in these kinds of situations because of our location on the rivers and transportation system, and just, I think it's just a good thing to be ahead of these kinds of things and be planning with other agencies in the Willamette Valley. So, I will be attending and have been participating, and I was hoping that one of you could, would be interested to be able to go and attend it, and then you can just let me know. It's probably something you might want to discuss amongst yourselves.
Are we limited to one, like, official per jurisdiction?
No.
I mean, I'm sure everybody will see this as of interest, so...
Yeah, no, you're not limited.
As long as it's not a quorum, Your Honor, you're good.
Well, it's all...
As long as there's not a quorum, you're fine.
A quorum can't go, as long as they, just don't...
If you're going to have a quorum, we probably want to notice it, but if there's just going to be two...
I'd be interested to go in. Anybody else? Maybe you won't know from your calendar yet.
I'll have to look at my calendar.
Your furlough week isn't that early, is it?
No, I will still be working.
Anyway, I'll go.
So, I will RSVP for the mayor, and then if anybody else wants to go, and if you have any questions about it, I mean, it really is a lot of very interesting material here, so I hope you read it and enjoy.
Very good. And Commissioner Smith is...
I was wondering, Nancy, if you would, I know Nancy was one of several people who attended the kickoff for the bicycle tourism event that the county hosted, so I'm wondering if you wanted to mention briefly what that was about?
Yeah.
There was a workshop, I think, prior to the kickoff, but...
Right. The kickoff meeting involved folks from all over the county, and talking about what the cycling, the interest in cycling, what it can do for economic development in Clackamas County in terms of restaurants, hotels, bed and breakfast, tourism groups. There was a fellow there from City of Port, well, from the Portland area, who, his job is to do bike tours in downtown Portland, and now he's actually doing snowshoeing tours up in Mount Hood for the winter, because bicycling tourism is a little off in the wintertime, but, and what they can bring to your community. And Clackamas County is working with the state of Oregon to see what we can do here to grow this cycling business in Clackamas County, and to see the economic benefit, and also to see the opportunities for our community and just having a good time. So, we are going to be teaming with West Lynn to do a more intensive workshop on November 29, between 9 and 4, I believe. And I just sent out a request for Chris Wattsworth to send the invitation for this workshop to the CIC and see if there's representation there that would like to participate. I sent it to Lloyd Purdy, because we've got all the downtown businesses and restaurants that may be interested in participating, and also to PrAC, to see if we wouldn't have a Parks and Recreation, some individuals there that would like to participate. So, if there's anybody else you know that would be interested in playing a role and learning about what good can come to Oregon City and West Lynn or the county with this kind of activities, let me know.
And the meeting on the 29th is at West Lynn City Hall.
West Lynn City Hall. Yeah, and at the meeting we had a week ago, it was representatives from all over the county.
Right.
And then also some other assorted state bicycle-type stakeholders. And this one now will just be people from West Lynn and Oregon City. They're breaking up, they're partnering up cities to have these day-long workshops.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. And then the last thing we have, David Wimmer's going to give you a brief description of our senior discount low-income utility rates.
Good evening again, Commissioners, Mayor. For years and years, we've had a program for low-income, senior citizens, handicapped people, where they qualify, they pay one-half of what the normal utility rates are. And this thing, it seemed like it had been here ever since I got here, and I looked at, talked to our people in utility billing, and none of them can remember when it started and was here, and so, anyway, I ran across Tri-City's rules and regulations, which the city adopted in 1994, and it establishes, it doesn't establish it, it talks about the plan, because the plan was in effect even before that, because there's a table, it was for 1991, it was in there, so it may have started in the 80s or somewhere. Anyway, it's based upon income, and Tri-City publishes what the income numbers are each year. And we have, in 2008, we had 77 customers that were on the plan. Today, we have 181. We get about three to six applications every month, and they're usually approved, because the people that apply are usually, deserve it, but they have to fill out the forms and meet the criteria. Then every year, they have to recertify at the first part of the year, so it's not once you're on, you're always on. And most of the social agencies around know, because we get a lot of referrals when people are talking with them and are trying to figure out their life situation, so. And like I said, it's also on our website, but we've had a request, maybe to publicize this more, and so, we looked at how we could do that. We have our utility bill, which you folks get every month, which we have a notice down here, which, in the corner where we put public notices, but that would have been my first choice. However, we've got it, that is locked up for the next three months, because we notify people two months before rate increases, so we'll be notifying people in December and January of the rate increase. It goes in January, which will show up on our February bill, so. We tell them two months before, then we tell them the month is there, so. So that's really not an option for the next couple of months. But a better option is we send out shut-off notices every month, which also has a notice on them. This is probably really a, these are the people that probably really need to know the most.
That's a great idea.
And so we just sent out this past week, and it'll be the middle of, we send it out about the 15th of each month. So the plan is to put it out each, to put it on there until further notice, I guess. We have about 700 or 800 people that we send shut-off notices to every month. And we're also, I was looking on the website, we can make it a little bit more visible. It's pretty easy to find it, it's in the question and ask-answer area, but we might move it so it's a little easier to find. So that's sort of what, that's what our plan is. As far as sending out a flyer to everybody, my fear is that we might get a lot of false expectations to people and make, end up making them upset when they don't qualify because they're, is that it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Good.
That's all we have.
A few things to comment on. One is that probably the most significant thing that's happened for me in the last couple of weeks is that Mayor Ogden of Twolton had facilitated, I think it was his idea, and he facilitated the calling in of all mayors together. We had a meeting this morning within the metro region. I think there were only three mayors that weren't there. Mayor Ogden apologized. He failed to include Mayor Sam Adams on the list.
No.
But in any case, he will be included. He did send, he did send a subsequent email and didn't get a response from it. But apparently, there are emails that get directly to the mayor and there are email, I mean, there's a method of contacting the mayor directly, and there's one that goes to the staff and somebody there had the contact that goes to the mayor directly. So, but the idea is to discuss regional issues of interest. And this was the initial get-together. The plans are actually to have a monthly meeting. There was a big discussion of if the mayor can't make it, can they send a delegate? And the answer, this wasn't my idea, I thought the answer should be yes, but no, no, it was only gonna be mayors. And then there was a discussion of whether we bring staff people to accompany us. And the answer among the majority of them was no. So this is, this is a meeting of the mayors. I didn't agree to either of those, but I was in the minority, myself and the mayor force row. Anyway, one of the topics, and I think at one point, we might want to have a study session, the general topic is going to be on compression. I actually presented that and the decision was, there was about four things, but I put this on the top because several entities were going to go in, are very close to going into compression. And we've had something coming up that I'll mention in a moment that triggered us realizing that we're pretty close here in Oregon City to going into compression. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it maybe to Dave Frazier. I understand what it is, but you might be able to communicate better to the public here what compression means.
Well, Mayor, I'd rather wait until we actually put it on the agenda for a work session. The Finance Department right now is working on a memo, informational memo that will provide.
But what in general compression means. Because I brought it up and I see a bunch of.
Young children.
Well, not only that, I see some older people with glazed eyes at the mention of the word. And I think you can state what that means.
I'll let Dave tell you because he's about half-done with his memo now.
Okay.
Basically, what compression is, with Measure 50, they established a school pool that said taxes would not be more than $5,000.
For all entities, for all taxing entities, right?
All schools were fine, yes. This is a statewide thing, so. Then there's a general government pool, which is the county, the city, all the other things. That's a $10 pool. Then there's the debt service, which is another pool, but that does not have a cap on it. And it's based upon real market value, not assessed value. So when real market value was way up here and assessed value was down here, there was way, plenty of room. You could, even though your tax statement said $10 on it, you could still probably add another $6 or $7 because it's computed on real market value. But the last three years, in our case, the assessed value has gone from, or real market ratio has gone from 64% to 74% to 84%, and it's probably gonna go to like to 90%. So once, once you get the real market value and assessed value equal, you can't assess anymore. Your taxes, even you won't even get your 3% and all the local option folks will lose their money and that kind of stuff. So it's come upon us really fast. It looked like a few, three or five years ago, it never happened, but.
So I guess in short is that the different taxing entities can have a cap in which their total taxes can exceed a certain amount. And once you reach that amount, then if you start crossing it, then you actually can, you end up collecting less taxes to support your services.
We've actually had compression here in the city. It's on, make, compute on a property-by-property basis. Like all the manufactured homes have been at about compression for a few years. And then we've had all, the personal property in the county has pretty much been that. So we've been losing like $10,000 or $11,000 a year based upon 9 million, which is pretty insignificant so far, but it can get.
Yeah. In any case, this is something we're gonna be talking about in the future here. The other thing really was the same I was involved in, I watched the web streaming of the study session and Nancy Crushhour made the presentation talking about issues about site selection for public works and so forth. And she mentioned that we really need to decide what our priorities are, not as much in site selection, but we have issues of water rate and sites. And I think you mentioned another important item. And I didn't hear a dialogue specifically on what the, how we want to prioritize those things. So I want that to come back forward to us, whether it's at a study session or simply or maybe in a commission.
January 21st? January 21st is your goal-setting update?
No, that makes, that makes sense.
That's, we're gonna be pressing the go pedal on the water rate rollback.
Okay. So that's something I wanted to check on. I think that's pretty well that I wanted to cover on the city manager's report. Do any of the Commissioners have anything you wish to report? Oh, well, I do have to make, mention something. James Nacita and I went together to talk about the, to interview another person for the Natural Resource Committee. And we've made an appointment to Eric.
Carr.
Carr, Eric Carr. And that actually fills the Natural Resource Committee. They will, they're arranging a meeting for later this month. And you wanna say something about that?
The Natural Resource Committee meeting will be next Tuesday at 7:00 PM here at City Hall.
And Commissioners, that does fill one of your goals for the year.
Congratulations.
And there are appointments will be made after the beginning of the year to fill, to fill terms that have expired to refill those particular positions. We do have one seat that is unfilled at this point, and that's the only one that I know of, and that's on the Planning Commission that has not been filled, that is a current vacancy. So.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I don't know any, I don't know any other currently unfilled positions.
I think they had them all on that paper in front of you. They were all listed. Anything that says vacancy, anything that says vacancy is a current opening.
Okay. Anything that's vacancy is a current opening. I wouldn't bury that. Okay. No, I, I think these are ones that are becoming vacant at the end of the year.
Why does it say opening? I know, it's kind of confusing. Well, it says opening.
The Planning Commission is vacant?
Yeah.
Oh, there's one vacancy on the Traffic Advisory Committee. And there's, how's that?
I think we're gonna have three of them now.
Three that are currently vacant?
It's just brand-new information.
Okay. Well, we're almost at the end of the year. Okay. And one on the Urban Renewal Budget Committee, yes. Okay? So we have things that are currently vacant that we need to fill and get, and get candidates for. Some of these were, some of these we're gonna have candidates for the positions that are opening up, and we have a number of candidates there that exceed the number, so we might be able to appoint some of those to the currently vacant positions. Okay. Does anybody else have any? Yes, anyone?
Signed up first.
Rocky signed up first. Push her button.
Turn my machine off.
Oh, dear.
Wow. I was wondering, actually, these students, if they had to attend the whole meeting, because if you did, you came on a good night.
Yeah, we're getting out of here.
All right. A few, a few things I wanted to mention. I mentioned last, our last work session, the band was in Washington, or, excuse me, the band was in New York City. And they've returned from New York City, the high school marching band. And I just wanted to congratulate them for representing both our city, school, and our state very well in New York and playing in the Veterans Day Parade in New York and also performing with about 20 other high school bands near Times Square in the Band of Tribute, which was really amazing. So I'm really proud of them. Wanted to mention football. Earlier this year, we had a quite depressing game of football with Westland High School. But the story ends quite well. Westland High School and Oregon City High School were both in the first round of the state playoffs. There's, the first game of the bracket took place last Friday. Westland lost and Oregon City won. And so for the first time in 15 years, Oregon City is in the state tournament, and that's exciting.
Is that why you're wearing Westland colors?
Shut up. No. These are ducks, right?
No.
It's one color.
Well, the ducks have every color.
I know. Okay. So anyway, they play again Friday night at the stadium in Oregon City. They play David Douglas, I believe. And so that, you know, if you get a chance to go to that, watch a football game in the snow. It'll be exciting. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the tree lighting, December 3rd, Main Street, right? I don't know what time. I think it's like 4:30, four?
Four? 4:30.
4:30 to 6:00. I also know that I think it's December 2nd and 3rd is Operation Santa Claus, which is the collecting of canned food around the city from the fire department. You can look online for those dates. There's two different routes, I think, on Fri, one on Friday night, one on Saturday night. And I think, if I'm correct on this, I think Friday night's Holcomb and Saturday's Oregon City. Then I also wanted to mention the high school play coming up, South Pacific, which will take place, Oregon City High School, December 7th through the 10th. And that's it.
Commissioner Smith, in the victory calls Oregon City, do they say, do they say anything about remembering the goats?
No, I'll remind them about the goats.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mum, oh, no, Commissioner Roth's on the green.
Oh, Jesus.
No, she is, you know, she's, she's, she's on the green.
Okay, okay. I have two things. I attended the metro meeting for the mayor on November 9th. And they had two, two very interesting presentations. One was Dr. Zhai Yu from China, who talked, he was the designer of the forest park at the Olympic Games that were there last year. And talked about the mountain in the forest park being 150 meters high, and it was made of trash.
Yeah.
Wow. So that was, his designs were beautiful. The second one was ties into Nancy's bicycle group, and that was the Metro Transportation Planner for the year 2035. And their projection, if they reach their Level 3 of Goals, is 30% of the population bicycling. I don't see how that's gonna happen, but.
Wow, I don't see that happening.
Since I crash every time I get on my bike.
There are some strong legs.
Put the training wheels back on.
Anyway, they'll blend well, those two, those two goals. Thank you.
See, no more greens. I, we're gonna call, I'm gonna go ahead and, no.
Don't even talk about the emergency preparedness, the two that you attended on earthquakes.
Well, that was a great presentation. I, are you gonna talk about it?
No, go ahead. I wanted to remind you to talk about it.
Okay, well, I'll be happy to talk about it. We had two emergency preparedness, one dealt with slides and the other one dealt with earthquake preparedness. And they were excellent presentations. The Scott Burns was there. He's from, he's the geologist from Portland State University, who's done a lot of work in our area. We also had an expert on the specific faults in the area. One of the things I thought was interesting was the, in terms of a, of a shift at the plate, the kind of earthquake that results in the, the terrible earthquakes that San Francisco has experienced, but more like the tsunamis that, the, well, the earthquakes and tsunamis that have affected places like Japan, like Chile. Our area is a broader, is a broader continental shelf. And the impact of that kind of earthquake further inland where we are is, would not be as great as experienced in some of the other communities in the world, but of course, it'd be very serious. And one of the, one of the persons there was an expert on the faults in Portland. And my recollection, I didn't write it out, but the fault that we have running through Oregon City, the Bolton Fault, they feel slips about every 750,000 years. And so he was saying that we didn't have to be terribly concerned about that fault, which pleases me no end because it runs right behind my house. And so it's one thing we don't have to be concerned about. But the potential of a seismic nine earthquake in, in the not-too-far future is very high in Oregon. I think they have about an average period of 300 years, but that's an average period. They can be shorter or longer. And, and I think I said 300, I think it was 500. But in any case, we're, we're well beyond the halfway point to the average and that we have to be concerned about having higher seismic colds. We're better off in wood-framed houses, which are most of the houses in Oregon City, than we would in houses built of brick and so forth. And that the protections that you want to look for if you're in an earthquake is to get under something. Apparently, there's been an email going around that you, getting under something is dangerous. But the likelihood in wood-framed houses of a building actually collapsing downward like this is very, very low. And the thing is, you're more, you're gonna be more affected by light fixtures or pieces of ceiling dropping on you than you are of beams in your house dropping on you. And it's more important actually to get under something, a table or something, and hold on to the leg of it to make sure you're not hit by falling debris. Is there something you want?
Drop, cover, and hold on.
Drop, drop, yeah. Say it one more time.
Drop, cover, and hold on.
Drop, cover, and hold on. Cover, covers a hard.
See where you are.
Yeah. Yeah. Initially, don't go running around finding a place.
Actually, Doug, you were right at the 350-year interval.
Was I?
And we're at 410 years. I count it down daily. No.
You count it down.
It was very well-attended, and I did want to thank the CIC and Nancy Crushhour's staff for putting that together. And I don't know who else was involved in that.
Neighborhood Association.
The CIC had a subcommittee that worked with Public Works.
Yeah.
And the Oregon City School District was a partner as well.
And it was, it was very well-done. And so.
So William, I know you attend CIC. Can you thank them for us, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to add comments to what was said? Okay. One of our very active volunteers in the back. In any, in any case. In any, in any case. Are there any other comments?
The Safeway ribbon-cutting was a huge success. There must have been a couple hundred people there, I think. It was just huge. And then, I don't know how the boat ramp ribbon-cutting went, but I'm sure it was well-attended outside in the rain. I couldn't attend, I'm sorry. But the Safeway was great.
It was well-done, small attendance, but very enthusiastic.
Very, 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 very great presentation by the mayor of Oregon City. I wasn't evil, I was out of town, both for the study session and for the opening of Safeway. I went, went over on Monday to introduce myself to the city, to the, to the manager of Safeway. And it turned out the district manager was there as well and talked to them. And I commented on the great job they did in the, in the parking area, the landscaping and so forth. And he actually told me that Greg Danielson made very good recommendations of how that should occur. He owns the property, doesn't own the Safeway building, but he leases the property to Safeway. And he said Greg Danielson was very instrumental in the planning of that area.
I'm sure with staff support, right? Suggestions, of course.
Anyway.
That's all.
Any other comments? With that, the session is closed.